In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on August 11th, 2011 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll start with a roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely, Dr. Pageant. Ms. Bogachewski?
Here.
Mr. Gillett? Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kent?
Here.
Mrs. Lay?
Here.
Mr. Pageant?
Here.
Mr. Pulserfer?
Here.
And Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
All right, we're going to move on to the review and approval of minutes. We'll go with a motion and a second, so I'll take a motion for the July 18th, 2011 public session. And a second?
Yes.
Is there any discussion for that? We've received our minutes ways beforehand, so we've had some time to review them and send back comments, so I would hope that ample time, so I'm hoping that there's less problems. All right, seeing no comments, all in favor? Aye. And opposed, and abstentions. All right, moving on to the July 18th, 2011 executive session, I need a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Mrs. Haas?
The minutes, actually, all of the minutes are signed by Ayman, and he wasn't at those meetings. Is that acceptable because you're the Board Secretary and you supervise the minutes?
It is, Mrs. Haas. May I, Mr. President? It is, Mrs. Haas. I certainly have read through them, and I consulted with the Assistant Board Secretary and confirmed that the minutes are accurate and precise.
Okay.
All right, seeing no further comment, all in favor? Aye. And opposed, and abstentions. All right, moving on to the July 26th, 2011 public session, I need a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? I'll just say that I'm sorry I missed that meeting because there seemed to be a lot of good discussion at that meeting. My one vacation. All right, any other points? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Aye. And opposed, and abstentions?
That would be me.
And, and Mr. Pulserfer?
I wasn't there.
And Mrs. Bogachewski. All right, moving on to the July 26th, 2011 executive session, I need a motion.
So moved.
And a second? Thank you. All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, and abstentions, the same ones.
You go ahead.
All right, moving on, I see we have correspondence, which are posted on various topics. All right, and then we can go on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin by sharing with you some progress on a few of the construction activities that we have in the district. We actually had an emergent project come up at Sunnymead School, and Mr. Mahmood, would you give a brief overview of that?
Sure, Dr. Schiff. Good evening, Board members. In June, we had a sewer backup at Sunnymead Elementary School, and routinely, we would ask our own maintenance staff to take a look at this. Our maintenance staff did take a look at the sewage backup. They felt that the job was, obviously, there was a lot more than what we can do internally. We then called Rotaruder for a routine check on this sewer baggage, and unfortunately, what happened was a pipe had failed. Bear in mind, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, that this school was built in 1958, so obviously, the pipes that we're talking about are extremely old. As a result of this corroded pipe, Rotaruder came in and they do this new technology where they actually scope these pipes with a camera, and they were able to see that there was a lot of pipe damage in a certain area. They then recommended, obviously, because this could be certainly a safety item for the children, and it's in the classroom, so it's something we had to address. As a result of that, there were four classrooms. We had to actually begin the project and then expand it because the pipe damage was that extensive. We're estimating, the job is not complete, we had four rooms that had to be dug up, and we're talking, I've never seen a classroom that looked like the four classrooms that I've seen, I actually saw it today again, they're like six feet deep, so you're looking in a classroom. So we removed the tiles, we dug in six feet deep in order to fix those pipes. And what they do is, they actually have this new technology where they send this material through like a sock-like material through the old pipe, and it hardens, it gels, and then it actually creates this new system. If that, we didn't have that technology through this existing company, we would have had to dig, literally dig up the entire pipe through the school. So, we're looking, Board members, at an emergent project. We contacted the county office, got approval from the county office, the county business administrator came in to look at the project. Estimated cost, estimated, Rob, the job is hopefully going to be done by Thursday of this week, is approximately forty to fifty thousand dollars. Any questions?
When you, when you say the job is to be complete, that's fixing the pipes, putting everything back?
Correct. Mr. Kent, they actually put back, Dr. Schiff and I were there this afternoon, they were able to put back and lay in concrete or cement for two classrooms. The other two, they're going to work on within the next day or two.
Mrs. Lay?
Thanks. I actually read about this technology in popular science, so I can, I'm glad that we can use it here. The question I had was, so they can repair it, but the tile will be put back and everything will be ready for the start of the school season?
We, um, yeah? Please, sir. Ms. Lay, we absolutely, we talked to the head custodian today, we absolutely will be prepared for the beginning of school. Two of the classrooms, believe it or not, when they put back the cement, it was able to dry. We even looked at it today. And putting the tile back up, not a big deal for us, we can lay the tile, get it to dry. Where there's going to be a lot of work is not necessarily Rotaruder, it's going to be our cleanup, because as you can imagine, the classrooms are dusty, there's some issues that have to be addressed. We will disinfect all four classrooms, we're going to bring some additional resources into Sunnymead. With the existing staff there, they won't be able to do it, so we're going to bring some additional staff and resources so that they can pitch in and make sure that, obviously, when we open for school, things will be fine. Well within the timeframe of opening for school.
Any further questions? Mr. Kent?
Another project that we're working-
Hold on, I was gonna say, is there, what's the plan for preventative maintenance for pipes of the other schools?
Yeah?
Yes.
What we're going to do, Mr. Kent, is we're, for Sunnymead, we're actually going to scope the other half of the building, there's another half, we're going to get that scoped and see what the pipes look like, and then we're going to take a look at our other buildings. I think what we're going to have to do is, when we meet with our Operations Committee, talk about a schedule, and obviously, with a schedule comes a cost, but our plan is to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pulserfer?
Along those same lines, how many other schools do we have that are roughly of the same age? I mean, I would assume Otten Road, the high school, the middle school, some of those aren't as old, but what other schools do we have in that age range?
HES, Hillsborough Elementary School, of course. Trying to think of one else. I don't know how old Triangle is, I'm not sure of the age of Triangle. What we'll do, Mr. Pulserfer, is we'll look at the age of these buildings, and that's how we'll prioritize scoping out the pipes.
All right. Dr. Schiff?
We do anticipate that the remaining cast iron pipes at Sunnymead will need to be replaced, if not, if not this year, then soon afterwards, given the age and the, and the problems with the pipes that were discovered. We also have another installation project that's currently going on, which is the installation of the digital projector units in each of the classrooms and the sound field systems. Mr. Mahmood?
Sure, Dr. Schiff. Board members, we are at the tail end of the installation of projectors and sound system. We cannot give a definitive date of closure of that project, but I can say to you that all of our projectors are currently installed, all the sound systems are currently installed. However, the conduit right now is sort of the area that we're working with our contracted vendor to perform is, that's sort of cleaning up the wires and making sure that, you know, every classroom is neat, all the wires are tucked in properly, but we are, you know, at the point where everything has been completed. I believe that the contractor is aware that we want to get this project as well off the ground and completed before school starts, and we met with the contractor as early as this morning, we don't foresee any problems, and every classroom in the district will have the projectors and the sound system ready to go before school starts.
Dr. Rosenberg?
Two questions. I'm glad to hear that those projects are moving along on schedule. I was wondering, two questions. Number one, would it be possible, at a time convenient to the school, to arrange an opportunity for the Board members to look at the technology, get a demonstration in a classroom that's not being used, or something like that? That would be my first question, for those who are interested. And my second question is, with the projectors in the room, does this give us an opportunity to, or will we be getting rid of the televisions, the old-style television sets that are in the room? Are they now redundant, or are they serving a different purpose? I know that most of the time, they show the running slides, but I assume that for all of the instructional presentations, the new projectors will be used. So is there an opportunity here to, I'm certain we're not going to buy anymore, but to, will they be coming out of the classrooms, or what's the plan for them if we've gotten that far? Maybe we haven't gotten that far.
Well, Jordan, I think, may I, I don't know, Mr. Rosenberg, I think we're going to have to talk to Mr. Handler, our Director of Technology, see what his thoughts are. The usage of the televisions, I know the high school constantly uses them, I just don't know a lot of the usage and what each school uses, each of the televisions are, but I would think if the projectors, and I don't know the capability of them, but if certainly, why have televisions in there if we have these great units? But the question's going to be, are they compatible? Is the software that they use, or the videos that they use, compatible with the projection system? There are some certainly questions that we need to ask before we remove them, but obviously, we wouldn't leave these, these older television monitors in there if we don't have to.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Mahmood. We also are completing our reconfiguration of our central offices. These were a painting project, re-carpeting, and building a wall to provide adequate conference space. We have completed this particular project with a few minor things that's going to be cleaned up with it. Just to remind the Board and the public, the carpet in the central offices were in disrepair, seams were actually torn, it was a tripping hazard in the offices. We had a conference table for a district this size that could seat probably nine comfortably. We typically have larger groups that we need to meet with. And the area across the hallway from the, from the district offices had a, had a smell in it, which necessitated the district to, to contract with environmental consultants to ensure that there weren't contaminants, or mold, or other environmental hazards within that particular work area. Although that wasn't the case, giving that room a fresh coat of paint and ripping up old carpet seemed to have remediated that particular problem. So that's the third project that we wanted to just share with you where our progress is. Also, we just, your administrative team, about over twenty of us, twenty-five or so of us, just returned from Syracuse. We all drove up to upstate New York together, and participated in three days of a professional learning communities institute with Rebecca and Rick DeForre, who are nationally renowned experts in this particular area. It is a unique opportunity to have the entire administrative team participate in such a wonderful professional development experience, and I wanted to give Dr. Antunes a moment just to share with you a little bit about what we're learning.
Thank you, good evening. PLCs stand for professional learning communities, and essentially, it's a collaboration between teachers, keeping in mind the fundamental purpose of school is the essence of learning. And the PLC is focused on commitment for learning for each student. So, it shifts the, it shifts the focus from teaching, what are the teachers teaching, to what are the students learning? And as Dr. Schiff said, twenty-five of us attended, which was absolutely phenomenal. And after, the sessions ran from keynote started eight o'clock in the morning, sessions ran until three, three forty-five, three fifteen one day, three forty-five another day, and then we, as a, as an administrative team, met and had a debriefing, and just talked about what we got out of it, what the administrators got out of it. We were joined by two teachers from our district, as well as our HEA president, and I've gotten several emails over the course of the weekend, it actually went until Saturday, and I received several emails over the course of the weekend from various people who attended saying how great it was. And everybody is so excited about it, the principals, elementary principals, want to meet with me to discuss some changes they want to make to scheduling, which is exactly the purpose. It's a long road, it's a journey, they talk about PLCs being a journey, and I can go on and on all night, but it's about a three-to-five-year shift, paradigm shift in changing culture, and it's just, it aligns nicely with the, with Dr. Schiff's Building on Excellence Report, with things that he talked about in terms of common assessments and that sort of thing. So, it really was a wonderful, wonderful experience, and I think everybody thanks the Board for allowing all of us to go out together. I mean, this has never happened before, for twenty-five of us to actually be there together during the summer to a, to a place that was drivable. So, it was really wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. Finally, just a piece of good news. The ESY school supplies drive for Hillsborough Township Department of Social Services. On Tuesday, August 9th of this year, Mrs. Fogles and Mrs. Mars extended school year classes, delivered on behalf of the program, approximately twenty bags of donated school supplies to the Hillsborough Township Department of Social Services Food Bank for distribution to community families. The items were donated by students, families, and staff participating in the school district's ESY program. This is the fir-, this is the third year ESY program has contributed to the Township Food Bank, and we thank those students and their teachers and their families for their, their generosity. That's all I have this evening. One, one last thing before, before we move on. Tonight, we'll be having a discussion that will come out of the committee reports on some suggestions that I have made to the Board for the, for the use of the, the additional state aid, the unanticipated, unanticipated state aid that, that we just received. Also, recommendations for use of some, some additional funds that are, that are federal grant known as the Ed Jobs Fund, and, and additional positions that I'm recommending that I'm suggesting should be funded through breakage. The, the, our new board configuration with our committee structure has begun. The Human Resources Committee has been fully briefed by administration on it, so has the Education Committee. The Operations Committee has not at this point, but I think we could all agree that it's, it's a good time to at least begin the discussion on it. We do not have any items on the Board agenda for you to approve tonight about, you know, those, those particular expenditures, but we do wish to at least begin the dialogue tonight and, and hopefully make some decisions the, the following Board meeting. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open up the floor for questions from the public. If the public would like to ask questions about the superintendent's report, about Rotaruder at Sunnymead, or any of the other items from the superintendent's report. All right, and I know there was some discussion during the presentation, but if there's any other questions from the Board at this time. Mr. Kent?
For the central office refurbishment, how did that come in compared to budget?
It's, it came in within the budget. We budgeted fifty thousand dollars for the full renovation, and we are, we're, I think, a few thousand dollars below that at this point.
Okay.
I don't know the exact figure, but we can get that to you.
Okay. I have another question, a different question. All right, seeing no further questions.
I have an additional one. On the PLC retreat, what were, what were your key learnings and what will you do differently? If you feel comfortable answering that now, or if you want to answer it, compile it later and report it to the Board fully, it'd be nice to see where our investments are doing.
Sure, absolutely. I can talk a little bit about my impressions of, of the time that we spent there. Some of the areas that the PLCs are going to be responsible for now, if you, if you recall, as part of the negotiations, we now have two meetings that are required during the month that are just set aside for professional learning communities. This year, every teacher will participate in professional learning communities, where last year, we had piloted voluntarily a decent amount of teachers, but certainly, we're, we're ramping this up to the entire district. But basically, we're looking at, at four particular areas. The first one is to establish what the DeForres would define as a guaranteed curriculum, which is, which is more in-depth, a more in-depth look at all of the skills and concepts and the pacing guides that teachers sit down, they rehash it, they take a look at it, and basically, they guarantee that all of us are going to be teaching this particular skillset in the way that the teacher feels best meets the needs of the children. That's number one. Number two is to develop formative assessments that are common, and I spoke about this as part of the Building on Excellence Report, where it is very, very important that we establish common assessments, that if I'm a, an Algebra I teacher, the expectations of learning for, for the kids in my class shouldn't be different than Dr. Pageant's students while he's also teaching Algebra I. We should have common assess, common expectations, and the assessment should be common as well. And then those assessments are analyzed by the teaching staff. And one of the things that I found very powerful is the focus on a systemic intervention process, that when a child is having difficulty, that it's not just that teacher's responsibility alone to help the child, that it becomes a school-wide intervention, that the entire building is built around the idea that no one here is going to be allowed to slip through the cracks, that we are all responsible for, for student learning. And, and that, I think, is very important. They call it the pyramid of intervention, and developing those pyramids, that again, are systemic, that are part of the, the school culture, that is predictable, is not ad hoc by teacher, is something that we, as a school community, agree upon and implement, I think is very, very important. And then also, how do we address the needs of children that understand the concept even before we teach it? And how are we extending their learning and making sure that their time is, is value-added time as well? So that, you know, conceptually, this is very commonsensical, but in implementing it on a district level will be a, an important challenge for this district as we, as we move into this area. So those are the key understandings from-
Thank you. All right, seeing no further questions, I think we're moving on to committee reports. You can start. Mr. Pulserfer?
The Human Resources Committee met on August 1st. This was our first meeting, as Jordan mentioned, in the reconstituted committee format, so we did have quite a bit of business to go over. I'll try and go over everything we talked about, but I won't go into detail on the smaller stuff, I'll bring out the highlights. First, we discussed the Ed Jobs Grant and some of the positions we would like to consider funding through that. In that area, we're looking to address some technology issues, technology training, and also class size reduction, which is something we had kicked around for-
Chris, you might want to speak.
Oh, sorry. And class size reduction, which is something that we had considered for a number of different ways of funding, but we're looking at under the federal jobs grant. We also discussed some positions, as Jordan mentioned, funding them through breakage. One of the things that we had talked about at different times, again, and looking at different ways of funding, it was a community outreach coordinator. This is something that I think we need to move forward on to, to help with grants and other opportunities to present to the school district, to the public around us, and also to the larger public. And this is something the, the Human Resources Committee agreed unanimously that we should pursue that. I should say, we also agreed unanimously on the discussion points about the Ed Jobs Grant, that we should pursue that. We followed that discussion with a discussion about adding a vice principal to high school. We discussed with Karen Binger, who joined us for that meeting, the ratios, the current ratios to students, to vice principals, along with the impact from prior cuts in, in department supervision, which has put more work on the vice principals that are there, and also comparing the ratio of vice principals to students from, I think it was fifteen years ago or so, and the ratio has gone up significantly, but we haven't done anything about that, so it's getting much harder. So this is something that the committee, again, unanimously agreed that we should be pursuing, funding that through, again, this is through breakage, but to get another vice principal in the high school to lighten the load, because at this point, we don't believe the vice principals are being able to be as proactive as they should be, and they end up often being too reactive. So we thought that was an important position to pursue. We also looked at the position of a part-time health benefits coordinator. This is something that would be beneficial both for our, our teaching staff and also for our office staff. With this larger group of employees, you know, there are a lot of things that just come up through the course of the day and the course of the week that are benefits-related, and right now, it's sort of whoever you happen to get a hold of tries to follow up on it. Considering we have over a thousand employees, there's a lot to be covered there, and we felt we really need to have somebody in that position to kind of take care of some of the issues. We think in the long run, it would probably pay for itself just by reducing the wasted time from the, you know, the wrong person trying to track something down. Another area where we felt that we were coming up short as compared to the past is we considered adding another senior systems engineer. As you know, we do not have a large IT staff, and with, with all these technology initiatives we've been looking at, we really felt the need to add to that technology staff and add a senior person, because as short-staffed as we are, we need anybody who's there to be as experienced and, and technologically savvy as we can get. We also discussed world language, which as everybody, you know, we've discussed before, we're not in compliance with that, so that's another area we think we should pursue positions to, to fill those slots and make us compliant again. And we also discussed some policies, which I believe are on the agenda for tonight, for second reading, duties of the superintendent and employment of substitute teachers. Those had both been on the agenda for first reading prior to the new committee structure, so we reviewed and unanimously agreed to put them back on for second reading. And those are the highlights of our committee report.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Haas?
Hi, the Education Committee met on August 9th at 7:30 in the morning, and we discussed a lot of the personnel positions that Chris has already outlined, so I won't further belabor them. We discussed them in relation to the educational program and clearly support class size reduction. We were split in our support of a fourth vice principal at the high school, and would like the Finance Committee, the Operations Committee to also weigh in on that. We discussed the world language elementary teachers in the context of having further discussions about what world languages should be taught in the district. And currently, there is a world language task force that's charged with bringing the district into compliance, but also will be exploring the addition of potentially Arabic and/or Chinese. We're also considering having the introductory program at Otten Road moved to the elementary level so that students can choose- level, so that students can choose their language and commit to that language, you know, make the choice of language in Autton Road, and then pursue that further in high school. There will be a survey for community input, and a suggestion was made to discuss this at the next community partnership meeting, which I believe will be at the beginning of October. So that was the story on that. We talked about the anti-bullying coordinator, a REED 180 instructional assistant at Autton Road. We spent a lot of time discussing the high school FUSE iPad implementation project, which is a pilot project to have two Algebra I classes at the high school utilizing iPads and a particular program for Algebra I instruction. That was discussed at length, and I believe everybody got a copy of that. Okay, so if there are any questions on the pilot program, direct them to the administration. Thank you very much. And we also discussed the possibility of a middle school iPad implementation for people who are in the seventh grade Algebra I class, also using iPads with teacher-selected mathematics applications. So that was going on with that. We have a cap, the Children at Play Curriculum was discussed at our meeting, and it's on tonight's agenda for approval. We very enthusiastically recommended it and commend the people who worked on that for a very thoughtful and the kind of program that makes you want to go back to kindergarten. And we're approving, hopefully, tonight, a book, Fundamentals of Athletic Training, which is necessary for our Sports Injury II class. We purchased some supplemental materials for chemistry and biology curriculum. We had two policies that we're recommending for second reading, the use of electronic communication and recording devices, and the use of physical restraint. And the communication items, we've basically discussed that, well, we'll discuss further, but we discussed the next community partnership meeting, and hopefully, we'll have some further discussion about the world language choices and what the community would like to see there. That's that.
Thank you very much. I guess we'll open up to the.
Oh, one more thing.
Go ahead.
One more thing. I'm very pleased to say that Kane University has offered the Hillsborough District a course on cost and prejudice reduction to be given to teachers here for free. So not only are they bringing the course to our district, but they're offering it to our staff for free, and I think that's a wonderful thing, and I believe it was Enrique?
Gil Pollardi.
Gil Pollardi. Gil Pollardi, who is our substance abuse coordinator, who was aware of this opportunity and grabbed it for Hillsborough, so many commendations for that. Looks like a really good course.
All right, now we'll open it up to the public. If the public has questions about the superintendent's report, now would be the time.
Is there an operations committee report?
No, they did not. Well, I can tell you they didn't meet, so. All right, seeing none, we're going to open it up to the board. Mr. Pulsover.
A question, Judy, in the discussion about the FUSE pilot and some of these other technology issues, did the committee also cover the fact that student handbooks, the acceptable use policy, and all those documents would also have to be updated to reflect the newer technologies?
The acceptable use policy was part of our packet, and I believe it was written by the company that provides the software, so the acceptable use policy is in there, but your point is well-taken about the handbooks, because I believe this is the time of year where we're printing them or publishing them for the high school particularly, and it would be good to have some insert. If it can't be in the body of the handbook, it might be added to as an insert.
The plan is, is that for those children who will be given the iPad, that they'll be given special direction and the expectations for its use, and the information that we seek to gain from this pilot will be provided to those students and their families as well.
I just want to make sure we covered that. I saw that there was a reference to acceptable use policy in terms of the software and that, but just the general acceptable use of now, there is a technological device that we're providing that has its own usage independent of the coursework, and where we stand in terms of documenting what's acceptable and not in the general sense of now that they have that device, because I believe we covered some of that already in terms of using the computers in the library or something like that, but do we need to update specifically for these kinds of devices?
At this point, our acceptable use policy covers what happens if a child uses any of the technologies inappropriately, but I think by working through this pilot, there will be some things that we haven't anticipated, that we will learn from this and make the adjustments that are necessary.
Because we have some very creative children.
Yeah, that's a nice way of putting it.
Yes, there was some discussion about having software on the iPad that would guard against things. I think that's a safe way to put things.
All right, any other questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
For the human resources and the positions that were recommended to be added, which of those would be funded through Ed Jobs and which of those would be funded through, I think you said, breakage and any other sources of funding?
Sorry, I realized afterwards that I hadn't spelled that out for all of them. The Ed Jobs Grant would cover, and I didn't go over all these, but response to intervention, technology trainers, training and support stipends, and class size reduction. The breakage, from our review, was community outreach, the vice principal, the health benefits coordinator, which would be part-time, I'm not sure if I said that, and also the senior system engineer, and two smaller positions that we didn't discuss here. And then for the unanticipated state aid, that was, we also included an upgrade to target assistance math, which is already, I'm not sure how much it is now, but it would become, would it become full-time?
It would be a new position based upon need at the high school.
Okay. Additional world language, anti-bullying coordinator, and REED 180 aid at Autton Road. Was, that was from the unanticipated aid.
On the, for the outreach coordinator, I know that's been spoken about, and I thought there was a plan to use the Ed Jobs to fund the first year, and then any additional grants that are resulting from that first year's successes would then help be self-sustaining that way.
Yeah, when we first took a look at that, that was the idea initially. The Ed Jobs, however, you have to assign a building to the position as you account for it, that district-level positions are more difficult to get approval for. So what we did was we took an equivalent position, which would be a teaching position within our class size reduction, and upped that by one position. So although technically, it's not being funded through the Ed Jobs, that's how we were able to fund it, but I do want to emphasize this, that it is a one-year and only position, that the expectation is that this would be seed money for year one, and then in future years, that position would be funded by the revenue that it generates.
Thank you.
To that point, excuse me, we did look at this initially more from what were the positions we felt were important to add, and then had to look at what are the restrictions about the different funding we had, and kind of align positions with the funding.
Understood.
I just have a quick question. I understand that the superintendent has developed a plan for spending the additional $1 million in state aid and approximately $800,000 in Ed Jobs, and I also realize that the Personnel Committee, the Educational Committee almost presented this plan. My two questions are, can any of that be, any percentage be tax relief? And the second one is, is there any way we can develop possibly an online survey to find out what parents would want done, like if they have any ideas on what could be done with that?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you for your question. When we were accounting for the different positions, we looked at what was the need of the district, based upon my judgment and my understanding of where we had particular need, for example, in our world language area, we're currently out of compliance, that's an important need. I think Ms. Binger, the principal of the high school, made a very compelling argument to both the education and the human resources committees who met this month about the need for an additional high school vice principal. And Mr. Handler also, I thought, spoke in ways that as we move into purchasing additional technology equipment, the requirement to provide the support so that they work well and make sure that then investment is being utilized effectively in the district was money's well spent. That being said, we're also sensitive to what I heard from the board when we first discussed this matter, and the need to provide some form of tax relief. With these additional positions that I'm proposing, this would leave in excess of $400,000 for tax relief or for monies that could be set aside for possible tuition liability for charter schools, or for facility needs or other type of things. But the board will have some choices if you choose to move in this direction about what to do with that additional $400,000 or so and change, you know, as we put people on the guide, it changes a little bit here and there. But that gives you a ballpark figure of what we're doing. The, each member of the board has received information, detailed information about which is coming where, as part of the backup for the committee reports. So if you have some additional questions on specifics, you may want to take a look at some of that information. I'd be more than happy to clarify on any of those things as well. It gets, it does get a little complicated, because some of the positions are one year and out, and some of the positions are reoccurring. So I tried to make that explicit in the document, so that you can follow what the budgetary impact is for next year, for this year, and for future years.
Thank you.
Also, in Ed Jobs, there was a committee formed with.
That's correct.
Teachers and administrators and board member to sort of look at how they wanted to do it, which sort of gave the motivation to have it one year, but have it, what, have an impact for more than one year. So such as training people how to use the technology this year would have a bigger impact over many years, something like that. Any other discussion?
In the conversations about a new vice principal for the high school, were there any discussions or challenges or pushback with regard to what roles, responsibilities that the principal or administration saw that could be delegated to other staff at a lower level? This is still a tight year, and so I'm questioning the need for the vice principal, particularly the financial challenges. I think the population, the student population's been relatively flat over the past number of years, and my understanding is that that's been going well. This is the first time that we're getting this request for a new vice principal, and so I want to understand more of what the rationale was for that.
The, yeah, you're correct that the student population's been relatively flat for the last probably, I don't know, four or five years, something in that neighborhood. The problem is that the administrative staff has not been, the administrative staff has been reduced in terms of department-level supervisors, who are no longer there, who would have been responsible for, and Dr. Schiff, you can correct me if I'm wrong, if I misstate here, but had some of the responsibility for teacher evaluation and other issues along that area, with those curriculum supervisors gone from the high school, that responsibility has fallen onto the vice principals. So the student population hasn't changed, but the number of administrators dealing with everything that has to be done at the high school has been reduced, and most of that, the work that sort of got left in lurch from that reduction has fallen on the vice principals. So while the student population hasn't changed, the amount of work being put on the vice principals has because of those staff reductions.
I'm going to do a quick correction. It has stayed relatively flat, but back when the high school opened, they had three vice principals, they had 1,600 students, and presently, they have 2,400 students.
Yes.
So they've had an 800-student increase over time, so while it wasn't, you know, a big jump, there is now a lot more students than it started with.
You meant that 800-student increase is over how many years, and what has it been over the past five years?
I'll tell you what, not a coincidence, we have an expert in the area who can answer a lot more questions than I can. Mrs. Binger from the high school, come on down.
Good evening. I started as a vice principal at Hillsborough High School 12 years ago, and 12 years ago, we had 1,600 students, three vice principals. In the interim, we've grown to 2,400 students with three vice principals. The VPs are now carrying a caseload of 800 students each, which is really enormous. In the course of having discussions with Dr. Schiff and with the two board committees with whom I've already met, one of the things we talked about was the ratio of vice principals in our high school to other high schools in Somerset County of a similar size, as well as other high schools of a large size, similarly sized, large-size schools in our district factor group. And if we were to look at the ratios used by the other schools in comparison to Hillsborough High School, I'm just going to run through a couple of numbers for you. If we were to use Bridgewater-Raritans ratio, we would have three and a half vice principals. If we were to use Franklin's ratio, 4.8 vice principals. Montgomery, 4.2. Watchung Hills, 3.5. That's Somerset County, some of those are also in our district factor group. If we were to go just to district factor group reaching out statewide, Randolph, we would have 5.6 vice principals. Homedale, 4.6. Marlborough, 3.6. Montville, 3.6. Princeton, 3.4. And South Brunswick, 3.5. So when you're looking at comparative information with other school districts, we are definitely on the low side. I also pointed out in talking with the committees and with Dr. Schiff, as we were talking about this even being a possibility, is that if you reflect back to February of this past year, our vice principals gave, I think, a very compelling presentation to the Board of Education about the depth and breadth of their responsibilities, and with the supervisory cuts that we've had, those people who have been in the building on a day-to-day basis to answer those questions that come up and to field those many, many needs of teachers and students in departmental ways, those supervisors have disappeared, which means the vice principals are stepping in to handle those things, because the district supervisors are, you know, their plates are full in all of the buildings. So that certainly is a factor as well. And then I think the final thing that, and probably the most important thing as far as I'm concerned, is that we have, in the past year to two years, we have experienced an enormous, enormous and heartbreaking increase in students experiencing emotional and mental, physical, drug-related, suicidal ideation-type categories. Our guidance staff is dealing with them as best they can, but when you have a student who is potentially threatening suicide and has shared this with friends, it truly does take a village to rally around and make sure that that student's needs are addressed. And this past year, although I don't have hard statistics with me, we have probably sent out an average of one, two, or three, somewhere in that range, students per week to either psychiatric emergency services or sent them to their own psychologists and psychiatrists because they have been experiencing difficulties. And I really am to the point where with the economy and pressures going on at home, with students themselves who would like to be doing things to help home situations but can't because the lower-level minimum wage jobs that used to be out there no longer are, there's just an enormous amount of stress on our kids, and I don't want to lose another one. And that's what it comes down to for needing another vice principal.
Mrs. Haley?
Seeing that I had a.
Seeing that I had attended one of the meetings where you gave your presentation, my question is, if we're having these types of issues, why wouldn't we think about hiring more counselors or people that specialize with emotional issues? I, I can't see with hiring another administrator how that's going to change things.
The counselors are handling some of this, as are the school psychologists, as are the child study team, um, members, but the vice principals play a very critical role in being that junction point for all of those different groups to come together and make sure that every aspect of every student's needs are attended to. The VPs are the ones who are kind of the cornerstone where the child study team is meeting with them regularly. They're, they're discussing behavioral issues and academic issues. The guidance counselors are talking to them, as are the SACs, about social, emotional issues. And the vice principals are the ones who have the leverage and the title and the position to be able to turn around to a family who is already, in many cases, traumatized in their, in their own ways, um, dealing with their own issues, and have the, the position to say, no, you have to take your child to psychiatric emergency services. No, you have to take your child for a drug screen, um, because this is the law and these are the things that need to occur. Very often, the counselors are, you know, they're doing it, they're, they're putting the messages out there, but there are some things that counselors really can't handle that the vice principals have to, and some things that even the counselors can handle, but they wind up with the vice principals anyway because a lot of people want to talk to, well, who's, who's your boss? Who's your next person? Who's, where's the administrator? And so on and so forth. So it does wind up there as well. Um, we do a really good job of rallying the troops and of pulling everyone together to make sure that these students' needs are met. Um, it kind of goes back to what we were talking about before, about the professional learning communities and wanting to do that with teachers and wanting to have those, um, opportunities available to our students where everyone is pulling together and everyone is working by the same set of rules and the same set of guidelines for student learning success. But I would, I would counter that with, students are not going to learn unless they're mentally, physically, and emotionally healthy. And this past year in particular, as well as, I'm speaking from 12 years of experience in this district, it's, it's getting harder and harder, and the kids are having a harder and harder time. And, um, it's an issue. And I, as I said, I don't, I don't want to risk students' well-being if we can do anything at all to avoid it.
Thank you.
So I wanted to comment that, um, when we put them in a budget line item, their administration, but it was really brought home from their presentation that they aren't in the central office. They, I gather, they don't spend much time in their offices at all. It sounds like that they're con, in constant, constant contact with students, checking on them all day, dealing with issues all day with teachers and students and students and teachers and, and that interaction and, and all those things that go on. So while they might count as administration, they're much more in contact with students than, than paperwork.
Absolutely, absolutely. As a matter of fact, I'll, I'll give you a quick anecdotal example. Um, I haven't been a vice, a vice principal for five years now, going on six years. Um, I interviewed a teacher candidate probably about six years ago in my office when I was located on the second floor, and I was bringing that person downstairs to meet with the principal. We stepped outside my door, a student asked me a question. I took a step further, my secretary asked me a question. I got to the doorway, a teacher asked me a question. I got stopped twice on the one flight of stairs going downstairs by two different people and two different questions, twice more in the first floor office. I walked into the principal's office and said, I have a candidate I'd like you to see. I walked back out to the candidate, said the principal will be seeing you any moment. It's been a pleasure meeting you. And the person just looked at me and said, is it like that all the time? And I said, like what? And the candidate said, that amount of information and that busy? And I said, I, I honestly don't know what you're talking about. And the person counted off for me exactly what we had gone through. And that was the norm, and that was six years ago. And it has only sped up since then.
Mrs. Lee, did you have a question? You were just saying earlier and then, no, Mrs. Lee.
Uh, yeah.
Would you like to ask it?
Uh, sure.
Or, or we can move on, you can come back?
No, no, it's, but, uh, is she finished? I just didn't want to-
She's there for answering questions.
Well, no, I just wanted to reiterate, um, what you said because in the past year that I've been a board member, any of the students who have come to us for disciplinary reasons, I have sensed that the vice principals really do know their history, really do know what they're going through and what their families are going through. So, um, I would say they're wearing several hats with their jobs. Uh, and I'm very concerned. I think I was attracted to the facilities, um, part of Board of Ed because I wanted children to have a safe environment, and I don't feel that they have a, a, a safe environment. And I'm, and I asked you, I said, has the high school changed? Because I feel like, uh, there are too many incidents now. It's much more than we should have.
All right. Uh, Dr. Rizemberg.
But that wasn't my question.
Okay.
That was your statement. That, I was just responding to what she said.
Okay.
My question had to do with the personnel committee, the, the committee report.
Um, is it vice principal related? Because we may want to mine this for a little while and then come back to your question, if, if that's good. Dr. Rizemberg.
Ms. Binger, you mentioned that when you came to the, to the high school as a vice principal, there were three vice principals and, and 1,600 students. Am I right? Uh, at that time, there were supervisors, you mentioned, in the building. How many supervisors were in the building as well as the vice principals?
Um, I want to say in the interim, we've lost probably four or five. I, I don't actually have the list with me, and so I don't want to be quoted necessarily.
How many, how many are there now?
In the building, high school-only supervisors, there is one.
There is one. So that's a decrease of four, five, whatever.
Yeah.
Has there been a change in the number of guidance counselors as the, as the student population has grown?
I think we've added one guidance counselor and one, uh, student assistance counselor or substance abuse coordinator, one SAC.
So in terms of handling all of these, uh, issues, uh, when there were 1,600 people in the school, we had three vice principals, about five supervisors, that's eight. I don't know how many guidance counselors we have. How many do we have?
10 total.
We have, so we had not, eight. Let's say we had eight then. So we had 16 people dealing with the kids directly. And today, we have nine guidance counselors, three vice principals, and one supervisor. So we're at, um, 13.
It's actually 14, 10 guidance counselors.
Yeah, so, so we're, we're down considerably. Um, and yet the population has gone up. So, so the question, I think, that people would want to know is, is, is why right now? I mean, this has been, if, if, if this has been brewing, what's, what's, is there a, is there a new sense of urgency that wasn't here two years ago or three years ago? I guess, I guess I'm trying to understand that.
I think it's probably a combination of factors. Um, first, with the cuts to supervisory positions, um, as of last year, the three vice principals and I all supervise departments. Um, I supervise the art department. I'm not an art teacher, but I supervise the art department. Um, we currently have one vice principal, Mike Semborsky, who is still supervising the applied technology and information and communication technology departments. Um, our athletic director and one of the other vice principals, yet to be determined, will be working with the health and physical education department as supervisors. Um, and so that certainly is a factor. Those are, those are departmental responsibilities that the VPs have not had before. Um, I also think that we really have seen just a change in, and this is not just Hillsborough, this is the state, this is the country, um, we have seen a change in emotional health. And it really is a factor. And when you're talking about a very large high school with 2,400 students, we've got 240-some staff members who come into that building every day, uh, and every single one of them is dealing with his or her own life experiences every single day, plus trying to get an education, teach an education, um, there's a lot going on and a lot that needs juggling. And, um, and we've been, we've been hit hard in a number of ways over recent years with, with, um, student illness, student death, staff illness, staff death, and, uh, and it takes a toll, and it takes a toll on everyone. And in the past, it would kind of ebb and flow, and there would be a natural recuperation time that would come about after any particular challenge or tragedy. We're not seeing the ebb. We're not, we're not experiencing the downtime and the recuperation time. Everything is just moving at a much faster pace and a much more consistent pace than I, than I think it ever has before. And, um, and as I said, I just don't want to see learning suffer. I don't want to see student health and well-being suffer. Um, I don't want to see the services that the high school is able to provide to all of our constituents, students, staff, parents, community, and, and anyone else that our students encounter in the course of the rest of their lives, because ours is a pretty weighty responsibility. That's exactly what we're preparing them for. I don't want to see it suffer anywhere, and we need the help.
Follow up with one more quick question. So there was this suggestion that came from, uh, a board member that, why don't we hire a guy, another counselor, a guidance counselor? Now, I, I know that vice principals have counseling training, um, but why don't we hire another guidance counselor instead of a vice principal? I mean, would that, would that not solve the issue or address the issue?
You know, a lot of the situations that come up are things that the vice principals wind, wind up handling because it may start out as a disciplinary referral in class and then it turns into X, Y, and Z. Um, as you talk with the student, you know, a vice principal's job is not just to take a referral and meet out discipline and handle it in about two minutes flat and send the student on his or her way. We are educators, and principal, vice principal, teacher, counselor, secretary, custodian, it doesn't matter, every single person in that building is going to use the opportunity when, when a child has made a mistake to talk about choices and to talk about what could have been done differently, the moment when the student had the choice to do something differently and what the impetus was that caused the student not to do it differently. And now being here and older and wiser and having gone through whatever the outcome for that first poor choice may have been, what they would do differently should they encounter a similar situation again in the future. Um, so a good interaction with a student over disciplinary infraction is going to take some time. Combined with, if the VPs are able to actually get out into the building, and they do, they really are out there, but get out there even more, get out there and be, um, I, I believe Mr. Pulsifer mentioned before, be proactive as opposed to reactive. We know who the students are who need that extra little bit, little bit of TLC during the course of a day. And the VPs will hang out in the commons in the morning and look for students A, B, and C, so that they can go up, shake hands, and say, how's it going today? And get a read for that student for the day. And if it's not looking like it's a good day, they're going to pull the student right away and sit down and have that conversation and try to get the situation under control before it gets out of control and ruins the rest of the student's day, interferes with classes, or winds up putting a student into in-school or out-of-school suspension. So the proactive stuff is what we're really about. At this point, though, they are working on almost entirely reactive status because there's just not time to, to intercede before something gets really big.
Yeah, I, I don't remember which committee was asked, but that was asked in, I think, maybe the education committee, uh, about, you know, given your choice, which one you would do, and, you know, you're on the front line. I, I'm sure you would take another guidance counselor too to deal with all your issues, but given your choice on, on which position you would have, it would be a vice principal to deal with all the things you've described. So, you know, you're the expert, and I, you know, I have to defer to which person would help you the most, and it sounds like a vice principal.
A vice principal would. And, and what I will say about that is that the vice principals are the ones that the teachers rely on when the teachers have exhausted what they can do in the classroom to control student behavior or to identify issues. The teachers can go to the vice principals, um, you know, they've assigned their detentions, they've had their parent conferences, they've talked to the students, they've done everything that they possibly can, and now they're going to come to the vice principals and hope that the VPs can, can intercede on their behalf and, and help the student come to an understanding of what a productive learning environment is going to be. Um, if the VPs can do more of the work with the students, there will be less fallout in the classroom when students are being disruptive or are interfering with the learning process. So one vice principal will service an entire student body, whereas one guidance counselor is going to work with a much, 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 much smaller number of students. Very successfully, very valuably, there's no question about it, but a vice principal will not only take care of all of those things, but will also handle those additional supervisory responsibilities, those additional building responsibilities that come up during the course of a day that need to be attended to for student safety.
Uh, I also want to comment that, um, over time, we've, we've, in the district, streamlined the administration. I mean, there was some comment about, uh, we're not, we have, um, much fewer high school supervisors, instead we have K through 12. So, uh, I understood and I supported, um, streamlining, uh, those numbers and, and lowering the amount of administration. We've lowered the administration by five in the, the high school, it sounds like, um, but in the meantime, we've increased the, the student count by 800, um, and the density of students has increased in the school, uh, if you've been in the hallways, uh, and the complexity of the student education and social issues have increased. Um, and, and you're, you're, I, I always ask for, for statistics and numbers to, to back things up, and you came with that, that, that we are the highest in the area in terms of how many students we service. So I think we definitely should look to lower administration in the district, but at the point where you find out that you've lost five and it's no longer equal, maybe you should consider adding one back. So that's, uh, uh, my thought. You know, if we look at best practices around the state and try to, um, do shared services and see what everybody else is doing that, that can be done better, um, we should also, when we look across the state, uh, if they have, you know, another administrator and we don't, perhaps we can count that as a best practices too. So, um, is there any other questions regarding Mr. Pulsifer?
I, just, I'd like to take opportunity to put a little historical context on, on Mark's question about, you know, why now? Um, in a prior life on the board, I was in a position of being involved in some committees that looked at the fact that there was redundancy between the district-level supervisors and the department-level supervisors, I can't remember exactly what their title was, but in, in the high school. And when we looked at the fact that we had redundancy and we really ought to reduce that, it did come up at that time that, you know, there was this other thing that was, had to shift to somebody. I think what we didn't foresee at that point as to how big that would become. I mean, it was, it was brought up that, you know, if you, if you take these people away, there are some of the, you know, the supervisory evaluative things that the department supervisors might have been doing that had to fall to somebody that wouldn't necessarily go back to the district office, but I think we, just at that time, nobody said, wow, that's going to be, you know, X percentage of the vice principals and do the math. I mean, we just looked at it as looking at the redundancies and trying to be more efficient there, um, and we didn't foresee at that time, you know, how big an impact that might have, along with the other things that have come along since then.
You know, also in, just a second, um, in terms of the, the enrollment that, that has increased by 800, um, but, um, I had another thought that, um, let's say it's peaked at 2,400, um, and that, that, you know, if you just hold out for another year or two, that number will decrease and everything will ease up, but the numbers we're getting back are that we're going to have steady enrollment. So it's not that this is the top tip of the wave and, and things are going to get better, don't worry about it. It's, well, we're just going to have the, the steady sort of 2,400 coming, you know, plus or minus. Um, Mr. Gins?
Yeah, just on, on the statistics, I heard a selection of, of, of ratios between the different districts. What's the average? So for the same district factor group that we're in, what's the average number of vice principals per student?
I don't have that available.
And also, and also in comparable ones within our county even. So I'd like to, I'd like to know those comparables because that's more of a, a true one.
And I appreciate that. I, we can, uh, we can research for the I district factor group, but I think that Ms. Binger had actually indicated within the county, the larger high schools and what their ratios are. You hit on Bridgewater, Franklin, Montgomery.
Was that, was that all, was that all of the high schools or was that a selection of them?
It's a selection of the ones that are of a comparable size to our district. I, I would say, uh, the lowest number I have is- I would say the lowest number I have is Montgomery High School, which...
But those were all the high schools of similar sizes in this county?
Similar sizes. Yeah, 1,700 through 2,800 students.
Okay, I didn't know if that was all of them or if it was a subset.
Just size.
So, thank you for clarifying that.
Can you read through those ratios?
Sure. Within Somerset County, the larger schools, again, the four that I mentioned before, Bridgewater, if we use their ratio, we would have 3.5. Franklin...
The actual ratio?
The actual ratio.
So, we have like 800 to 1. They have...
They have, Bridgewater has 705 to 1, Franklin has 505 to 1, Montgomery has 571 to 1, and Watchung Hills has 692 to 1, and that's just our county.
Okay, thank you.
And then there was the other issue that we don't have any, what are those positions called?
Dean of students.
Dean of students or...
Yes.
All those things we've gotten rid of or we didn't have.
There are a number of other positions that other districts have created to take care of some of the student discipline issues that come up, such as deans of student, or they'll have vice principals and assistant principals, and they'll have kind of teacher leaders and all of that, that, where those people are taking on responsibilities that our three vice principals are taking on, so. And the other thing I wanted to add was, in response to the question, "Why now? Why are we asking for this now?", I've actually asked for a fourth vice principal every year I've been principal, and I know that Doug Poye before me actually asked for a vice principal, I believe, every year that he was principal, and almost immediately, it was one of the things off of the chopping block during the budget process. So, we've been dealing with this number crunch for a long time. It's really just hitting kind of critical mass at this point.
Any further questions? Mrs. Haas?
I'd like to thank Ms. Bingard for giving us one of the best justified requests for a position. You did a lot of research in terms of other schools and what standards there are, but I'd like to point out to the board that this is a perfect example of unintended consequences of budget cuts. And one of the questions that I asked Ms. Bingard at the Education Committee was, for example, you know, we cut supervisors and the fallout was on vice principals. We added to class size and the fallout was on principals and vice principals. So, what I think we need to do, certainly before we go into another budget process, is take a look at whether or not all of these issues together create the perfect storm that is now being experienced at the high school in addition to all the socioeconomic stuff that's going on. I mean, it's hard to really compare other schools because you really don't know what their problems are. You know, there are some kids who emerge from the high school having never met their vice principals. I know of one. But beyond that, you know, there are all sorts of new problems going on, and yes, maybe we do need guidance support, and yes, maybe class size is part of that solution, because some of the numbers at the high school were horrible for the last two years. So, with this extra money that we have, not that it's extra, but it's meant to be a reinstatement of money that was lost in two years ago's budget cuts, we might think about whether or not we need to hire not only a vice principal, but any of the supervisors that are no longer here, and any of the teachers who alleviated class size issues in the past. So, I, you know, I very much appreciate everything Ms. Bingard has to say, but I would like to see the administration look at it on the overall level and see whether or not, you know, a less expensive supervisor might alleviate the time of the principals and vice principals who might be more expensive to the district. We create a lot of false savings sometimes when we eliminate support staff and the work winds up falling to the higher-level administrators. So, I would just like to sort of look at that, and I would really like to have the Operations and Finance Committee involved in this as well, because, you know, it's easy for the Education Committee and the Personnel Committee to support these, but there's that third element of the finance of all of this. And, you know, we have the numbers, but we don't have the total numbers of what all of that means. So, you know, I, again, appreciate your bringing all this information to us, and hopefully we could take another look at that.
So, just a couple more comments, just for, just to reiterate, the Human Resources Committee supported that unanimously. The Education Committee was split in terms of supporting an additional vice principal I'm opposed for a couple of reasons. One is the timing. We had the opportunity to present a budget for this school year, which you felt was the best budget and what you needed to adequately execute the goals for this coming year. So, we find out that we've got additional money with Ed jobs, additional money with unanticipated state aid, which I'd like to see go towards tax rebates or tax relief. So, the timing is troubling, is that it seems like it's coincident with when we happen to, we may potentially have additional money. We're already talking about, you've already recommended half of it get spent for this year, which I'm opposed to. So, if we'd like to, if we do this, I think it should be more comprehensive and it should be part of the traditional budget process, where you can go through and see what our resources are and where they're best applied.
Thank you. The flip side to that is that when the state came through and lowered us by $5 million and then we had to cut 66 positions. So, if they come back, when they realize they, well, the court sort of spoke to them and then they threw money at the Abbott Districts and gave us a little bit more, using it to reinstate the World Language Program and look where, and some of those positions cut, actually the majority were administrative positions. So, you might want to look and say that, well, if we have the money now, which was taken away at that time, that you would look to see where you absolutely needed it. Mrs. Haley?
Just because we got the state aid, the extra money this year, doesn't mean we're going to get it every year after that. And that is also one of the reasons that I'm opposed to hiring another vice principal. I think it's a tough sell in the community. I appreciate the work and you came with statistics. I know that you put a lot of effort into this. I just think that the public isn't going to quite have so much sympathy. I think that if you ask parents what they would see, what, because the things that you're describing are scary, scary stuff, and it's not to be taken lightly, but I just think that we need to maybe be a little bit more creative with the way that we're going to attack these issues. So, thank you.
Dr. Rosenberg?
Yeah. You know, I appreciate the argument that says that this money was given to us and it should be in taxpayer relief, and there is $400,000 of the million dollars that is now earmarked for a possible use for taxpayer relief. But I also appreciate the fact that we have cut and cut and cut in some very strategic areas over the years in order to make our budget. When I came on this board six years ago, five and a half years ago, we had supervisors in the high school, and they were eliminated slowly over time through retirements, and I kept asking, "Who's going to do their job?". And I never really got a good answer about who's going to do their job, except that we'll find a way. And I think I'm impressed with the issue that we may have gone a little bit too far. I'm also impressed with what Mrs. Lay brought up. I did watch the vice principals in action in front of the board when they came to us when we had disciplinary issues, and I was impressed with the amount of work, not only counseling work, but legal work that had to go in, that had to take place there. And I don't think this is the purview of a guidance counselor. Yes, if we hired two or three guidance counselors, we might be able to do it, but I don't think there's any savings there. I don't think you can equate a guidance counselor with an assistant, a vice principal in terms of what they do. But I'm not convinced that there's that big a disparity in the money. I think we have to make a commitment to fix the problem one way or the other and then figure it out. I do think the money was given to us to rectify the harm that was done to us in prior years. And I look to the staff to tell us what they think is the number-one priority in terms of personnel, in terms of curriculum, in terms of buildings, fixing the buildings, and what's the number-one things we need to do. And so, we asked you, you know, if you had a choice between X, Y, and Z, which would you pick? And you told us that this was your number-one priority. I have to respect that. We asked Joel Handler, when he was talking about technical support, what was his number-one priority, and he told us what it was. And so, I, you know, I take that as an expert's recommendation, and I know the stress that everybody's been under over there and how you've had to deal with this over time. We have an opportunity now to make a little bit of an adjustment here, and I think we should. I would not feel this way if we didn't have that $400,000, because I do think the taxpayers need some of it back in taxpayer relief, but we do. And I think this is a fair distribution of the money, and I do think the community will understand that we are dealing with tougher times from our students' perspectives, and they need a little bit more attention, that that's what you're telling us. So, I support this.
Mrs. Bogutowski?
Hi, sorry I missed you at the Personnel Committee. I was on vacation, but I just wanted to give you a little insight. I'm actually a nurse in the ER, and I see these children. I specialize in the PZD, and I'm actually one of the people that medically clear them to go to the different facilities to help them. And one thing I realized that, yes, you are correct, the numbers have went up tremendously in mental health with adolescents and teenagers, but talking to all these kids that I see, I don't believe that a vice principal is what they need. They need a social worker, a therapist, or a psychologist. They need someone to talk to, someone that can listen and that is there and can understand. That's what they need, because that's what they tell me, what they need. And this is what is missing in their school. And I just know that because this is what I do.
May I just mention that one of the new positions that we are, we're recommending funding is an additional psychologist that would be available to children in crisis based upon the additional referrals to psychiatric evaluative services. So, we're trying to address this particular need in a multifaceted way. One of the things, my own decision-making, that I try to understand when an administrator comes to me with a particular request, is I want them to give me both a quantitative and qualitative rationales for why this is the right thing to do. And I was compelled when Ms. Bingard shared with me that there is no ratio that we found, and we may find one or two, but there certainly is no consistent ratio of students to administrators that is higher than ours at the high school level. When you couple that with our administrative spending in the district, which is one of the lowest in our comparative spending group, and you have the quantitative arguments that seem to support that we are understaffed in administration at the high school, then you couple that with the qualitative information that Ms. Bingard and others have provided the board and myself about the quality of life aspects for kids. This was not hard for me to bring to the board as a serious need moving forward. I know that this is difficult, that this is not an easy decision by any stretch of the imagination, and I understand the concerns in the community about administrative spending. But I did ask the board, at what level do you begin to say, "Are we spending too little on a critical area? Are we going to lose our competitive edge, or are kids going to begin to slip through the cracks?". I guess if everything was fine, we wouldn't be here asking for it, but we're starting to see things a little bit differently now. We have, during the 2010-2011 school year, we lost 66 staff members, 44 of them were teachers. I'm requesting a fraction of that come back, not all of it, a fraction of it, and not necessarily the same positions. I think we can do things a little bit differently, better than what we've done in the past. If we spend every single dollar of the unanticipated revenue from the state, every single dollar, we don't give a penny back in tax relief, we are still $3 million less than what we received from the state of New Jersey in 2009, 2010. So, what my proposal is, is that we have a balanced approach between trying to address the needs that I've identified and I think that many of you agree with. We try to refund those particular areas and we still provide some tax relief. I don't think $400,000 is a small amount. I think it shows a reasonable recognition that we're still in difficult economic times, and tries to find an approach that's balanced. Thank you.
All right. Mrs. Haas?
Dr. Schiff, can you clarify exactly how many of the class-size positions are going to the high school and how many are going elsewhere?
The increases in class size, I'm sorry, the decrease in class-size positions are going to the elementary levels almost entirely. I believe we may have a position at the high school that we're asking the board to act upon, which is targeted intervention class, which lowers the class size for those children who are in the math targeted intervention. Were there any additional class-size reductions at the high school that you're aware?
Not that I can think of.
Mm-hmm. And frankly, I hope that in the future, we can offer some additional class-size reduction at the high school as those needs become available.
Mrs. Haley?
As a, excuse me, as a follow-up to Mrs. Haas's question, I do recall when I was running for the board, an article in the Courier that showed a picture at the middle school, talking about children sitting at the desks of teachers because we had too large of classes. So, what was the thinking in not making a selection there for class-size reduction?
We did talk about it at the middle school, and we received this infusion very late, as everybody knows, in the summer, at a time when the master schedule has already been struck for the middle school. We are also making a recommendation to make some changes at the middle school level in terms of providing a STEM program there, where it's more of an engineering, a science/technology, engineering and mathematics program as part of that. So, rather than adding to existing positions there and lowering class sizes within the related arts area, to have a chance to develop that new program with the idea that eventually we could do the same.
Thank you.
Dr. Rosenberg?
Yeah, just a comment. I think the term "vice principal" is a terrible term. It depicts administrator, and I'm trying to recall the presentation that they made here, and perhaps all of us, including myself and the public, should take a look at it again. It's on YouTube, because I recall having a conversation with Jay Mica about what he did, and I came to the realization that it's not about it. They don't do administration. They work with the kids. They are focused on the students. They do counseling, they do discipline, they do all kinds of interventions, and they're the number-one contact, believe it or not, not the guidance counselors, not the principal, but the vice principal, the number-one contact with parents, aside from the teachers, of course. So, I think when we think about vice, whether we think this is a justifiable position or not, I think it's a mistake to think of them as administrators. I don't think they... I don't think they sit in their offices and push a lot of paper around, I think, and run the building. I think Karen can run the building all she wants. I think these people are with the kids. And so, if we think they need this, that's fine. If we think they don't, that's fine. But I think their job description and their title are not in sync because they're not, they may be on an administrative salary schedule, but I think administration is the last thing that's on their plate every day when they go into the building.
Mr. Pulsover?
I would like to touch a little bit on the historical and the sort of why now with respect to the budget. As Ms. Binger pointed out, and again, I'll refer to my prior life, you know, I won't say we chiseled our words in stone back then, but we had these same discussions. And there were requests to add positions at different levels and different types as part of that whole effort. But for quite a while now, the emphasis in New Jersey at a broader level has been wasted money in administration. And that tends to be painted with a broad brush. I know when I was on the Board before, and I'm pretty sure now, I don't know in the interim, but of the more than 100 schools in our district factor group, we were always in the top 10 for least money, least administrative expense per pupil. To take a district that was always well-performing in that area and say, you know what, we're going to cut because administration is a bad thing. We did that year after year after year after year. And every year, I think, we got in a little bit more trouble. And I think at no point was there one year where suddenly it was just this huge difference. But if we kept doing that, as we did, sooner or later, you're going to have to pay the price. And I think that goes back to what Karen was saying, we just finally got to that critical mass. But this is something that has been requested in budgets for many years now. And because of the public sentiment and the climate in New Jersey, that was always one of the first things to go. But it's, I think it's unfair to say, why wasn't this asked for before? It has been asked for, and it was attempted to be justified, but the climate was always such that it got removed. And I go back to what Judy said, the law of unintended consequences of saying, you know, administration, we have to cut, we have to cut. Well, we should have looked at where we were and said, you know what? As a state, we may have a problem, but as a district, we aren't spending much, we shouldn't be cutting that. But we did anyway. And I think that was potentially short-sighted in view of public pressure that now it's coming home to roost, and we're going to have to deal with that. And I think it has been talked about, and we always felt like, you know, we really can't, we can't push that on the public to pay for that. But you know what? At some point, we have to step up and do the right thing and make sure that we have the right people in those positions.
Thank you. Any further questions on that or other aspects of the committee reports? Mrs. Lay?
A related aspect. So, in the last hour or so, we talked about jobs. And I did, I sent an email to Dr. Schiff and asked, as a Board member, I was having trouble, I was trying to match what jobs had been recovered and which ones were still in not being fulfilled. And for example, when we had the budget cuts, I do remember a presentation about the loss of a middle school counselor and the impact of that. And I kept looking through. I would really like to see a table so that we could understand. And I do understand that things change and we improve, but even if we had a table that had subject headings as to what was being covered by these staff additions, that would be so helpful. In my job, I simplify things, a lot of scientific data, and I love tables. So, I would like to recommend a table where we could clearly understand.
Would you like it in Excel?
That's even better because then we can manipulate it. No.
That's right.
Sorry. But yeah, I would really, I think that would help the public because I was having, I really spent a lot of time going back and forth between what jobs were being added and what we had lost and how were we recovering from the losses and how strong our school district would be after all of these additions. Having said that, you know, I understand the tax relief, and I would like to propose another kind of tax relief, which is to have someone in charge of energy conservation and education in our schools. I did not open the attachments because I thought I would get it from the committee reports. So, maybe it's somewhere in there. But I would like to understand the timing of the energy conservation that you had put into the 100-day report.
Thank you. Just as an overview, the Operations Committee will need to meet and to talk about whether or not this is a direction that we'd like to go in as a district. Our, I guess, preliminary conversation that we had on the Board seemed to indicate support on the Board. It will be the Operations Committee's responsibility, based upon administration's recommendations, to present a timeline to the Board about how we would implement and move through. I appreciate, and I agree with you, that we may need to make some initial investments in order to get some long-term savings, especially in the area of energy conservation. But as I shared with the Board last month, I think it's important to look at this very comprehensively, that we're looking at behavioral change, we're looking at making sure that all of our controls are up to speed, so we use technology effectively as well to control our energy costs, as well as to explore power purchasing agreements or other opportunities to provide renewable energies in the school, too, to look at it as a three-pronged approach and to try to put that together. But that will be coming out of the Operations Committee. I'm actually hoping that we can get a meeting together during the month of August. I'm not sure if we're going to be able to, but we do have one scheduled in mid-September.
Any other questions for any other portion of the committee reports?
Just as a, just as a follow-up, because I shared this with the full Board, and I'd like the public to know that in the New York Times, yesterday's New York Times, that the city of New York had an average reduction of 11% on their energy costs for over 1,124 schools. So, I'm sure we can do that in Hillsborough with nine schools.
We need to build a lot more schools. Any other questions? All right. I think we're moving on to new business. Is there any new business from the public? You can come up and ask at this point?
So, we cut them down.
Maybe referred or to a committee or the administration? All right. Seeing none, is there any new business from the Board? Dr. Rosenberg?
I don't know if this is new business or old business. I'll make a slight comment on the structure of the new committees. Is that appropriate now?
Sure.
Okay. I'm simply wondering, you know, there are these occasions when committees can't meet because the chair is not there or something like that. Would it be appropriate to have on each committee a vice chair and perhaps a designated alternate so that the committees could meet when people are away on business or something like that? I know that it is, it's, you know, when the chair is not there, you don't want to meet, but perhaps if it had a chair and a vice chair and they could collaborate, you'd have a better opportunity to meet. I'm concerned because we certainly would have liked the Operations Committee to have commented on all of these things. And the summertime is always difficult. But perhaps a vice chair who could call a meeting and then talk to the chair about what's going on, maybe we could, maybe that adjustment would be something you'd like to think about.
Sure. Thank you. Good idea.
All right. Seeing no more new business? Mrs. Haas?
I apologize because I know people don't like surprises, but this might be the kind of surprise you might want to hear. There was a letter that was sent out late last night from the Trillium School. Apparently, they have withdrawn their application from the state DOE. And that is huge news. That's like a three-quarter of a million bullet that we won't be taking, hopefully, which is not to say that somebody else couldn't come out there. But, and, you know, quite honestly, I mean, the joy isn't there. This was not one of those, you know, charter schools that were run by profiteers and privateers. But the fact that it's not there creates a large opportunity for us to not have to spend money elsewhere. So, just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you, Ms. Haas. I do appreciate that. You actually beat me to the punch. I was just about to say I have another piece of new business. You are correct. I did receive official notification from Trillium School that they have dropped their charter application, which means that our tuition liability has dropped from about 1.1 million to down to about 400,000 or so. I have not received anything from the Sinoh American Charter School, which is the other charter school, to this point. We anticipate that in the September-October timeframe, we will know from the Department of DOE, Department of Education, whether or not their application for charter will or will not be awarded. So, that's the timeframe there.
Mrs. Haley?
Just a little bit of town recognition, but part of the town recognition has to do with our schools. Hillsborough was, just voted the number 53 place to live in the country.
Wow.
By Money Magazine. That just came out late today. And one of the pieces and the factors is top-notch schools. So, I just want to take a moment to congratulate everyone because we do have a fine school system here. And hearing the news about the charter schools makes it even better. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Wonderful news.
Mrs. Haas?
The point that Jen makes is very well-taken. I think the best defense against charter schools is having a really strong school system that people don't need to supplement, augment, or find alternatives to. So, the more we continue to run a grade system and add to it when necessary and where reflected in public demand, the less of a threat we have from charter schools. So, keep up the good work. And I think also, it would be helpful to get out publicity about offerings of our schools, particularly if we're talking about the possibility of a Sinoh school coming in and we're going to be introducing Mandarin Chinese. Perhaps that will become less necessary than the founders may think it is. So, let's get it out there.
Got to get the message out. Absolutely.
We're thinking about teaching Chinese in the schools for people in Hillsborough. So, if you want to come and give feedback to the school board, that would be a great opportunity. Either email us or come to a Board meeting to be less subtle. Okay? Any other new business? All right. Seeing none, we're moving on to the action agenda. If there's any comments from the public at this time regarding the action agenda, you could do so at this time. Give your, well, we're going to name an address.
Hi, Jody Morrison, 23 Crowell Road. Just a quick question. Once again today, trying to open up some of the attachments, they are not readily available to anyone, so we can't see what any of these attachments are. So, if you can try and work on that with your website and see if there's an issue, we'd appreciate it.
Sure. Will do.
Thank you.
All right. And then, I'll let the Board comment during the discussion, if that's okay.
Okay.
Because we're going to go through each section.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
All right. Dr. Schiff?
Under the area of curriculum instruction, I'm recommending that the Board of Education approve the following items. Motion to approve curriculum, including CAP and kindergarten, I'm sorry, this is curriculum writing as follows for different curriculum areas. Motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between Kane University and Hillsborough Township of Public Schools, as discussed in the Education Committee Report. Motion to approve the textbooks, a fundamental of athletics training, again, mentioned and recommended by the Education Committee. Motion to approve the CAP curriculum, as recommended by the Education Committee, as well as recommendation to approve the high school Fuse Algebra I implementation pilot for this academic school year, as recommended by the Committee. Motion to approve the submissions of the 2012 NCLB program plan. And that's all for curriculum instruction.
I'll take a motion. So moved? And a second.
Second.
And discussion. Mr. Kinz?
For item A1, these look like that they're additions to what was requested earlier and approved. So, why, prior was it recommended a certain maximum number of hours? Are we asking for more additional hours?
Please. Dr. Anderson?
Okay. What happened was the, we asked for more people than applied for the position. So, these other people picked up the, needed to pick up some additional hours to complete the work. So, for example, for the math curriculum for kindergarten, we asked for four people, we only received two people. So, they picked up additional hours to complete the work, and it still is less than what we originally budgeted for, so it's not going over the budget. Same thing with the CAP curriculum. We asked for four teachers, we received three, and so, they were able, the person named was able to do some additional work on the time, still not exceeding what was the budget item for that area.
Thank you very much for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Bogutsky?
I just wanted to say how much I enjoyed the motion of approval, the Children at Play. I really enjoyed reading it, especially knowing the fact that my son will be in kindergarten next fall. Very excited.
The teachers who wrote that curriculum thoroughly enjoyed writing that curriculum. It is not in the format it typically is for a typical curriculum, and they really, really enjoy, not that the other teachers don't enjoy writing curriculum, but this was a fun one to write. They thought about what kindergarten was like when they were in school and went with it. So, it should be exciting.
I just wish I could have read it back in June because I think some of my coworkers would have put their children into it because they didn't quite understand, and I didn't really have the knowledge to tell them. But yeah, I really enjoyed reading it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, perhaps we can grow that program over time with word of mouth. Any further discussion?
Some more clarification questions. On the textbook, the book's about 10 years old or over 10 years old?
Full disclosure on the textbook.
Thank you.
The person who was, who's writing the Sports Injuries II curriculum came to speak with me about the, you know, about the curriculum, how to write it, the template, that sort of thing, because there is no supervisor for physical, phys ed and health. So, when she came to speak with me, she brought this textbook. Lo and behold, textbook has been around for years. We couldn't find any indication that it had ever been approved by the Board prior to my even being employed here. So, now that I knew about that, I had to get that approved with the Board. I didn't feel comfortable continuing to utilize the book without getting it board-approved. That's really what that's about. So, it's been being used for years and years.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. And I have an additional question. For A5, for the Fuse Algebra I pilot program, how many Algebra I classes are there at the high school level?
I think there's 11 sections or so. I'm not sure off the top of my head how many sections there are, but this is just two sections of Algebra I, with one with one teacher, one with another teacher.
Yep. So, about 10 sections total?
I don't want to, I'm not, I don't want to speak.
I'm not going to hold you down. Do it about 10, 11, 10? All right. And each class has 30 students in that, in those classes?
Little bit less, but approximately.
Okay. And in the, I'm jumping a little bit, and I guess I should have asked during the committee reports, was it questioned whether the pilot should be with two classes or one class? I'm just asking because we have to purchase the iPads upfront. It's a pretty significant purchase for 60 versus 30.
I'm not sure if the committee asked the question. We discussed that administratively about whether or not there would be, whether we can control a little bit for the teacher effect. Having two teachers do the pilot, we felt there could be some cross-pollination of ideas going there. Now, saying that, the middle-level pilot that we're considering is a little bit different. We have one teacher that would be working with the Algebra I students at the seventh grade level. So, I don't want to get too far ahead because we haven't we haven't completed the implementation plan. And the Education Committee still needs to, needs to review that. But we did have a conversation administratively about the benefits of having two different teachers do the Fuse pilot. We will, by the way, be only the second district in the entire state of New Jersey that's going to pilot this program.
I actually have that number for you, if you'd like it. There are 18 sections of Algebra One CP for next year, and two of those will have the iPads.
For which, which level?
Your question, you asked 18 sections of Algebra One, and two of which will have iPads.
Okay. Algebra is so popular. And the funding for that is going to come from where?
The funds from that will come from, the money is from the tech department, because when we, when we did all of the ordering for the overhead projectors, Joel Handler, the Director of Technology, was able to get a terrific deal. For every seven that we purchased, we got one free.
Okay, great. Thanks. Excellent. Seeing no further questions, roll call Mr. Mahmood.
Sure, Dr. Page.
Mrs. Bogushevsky?
Here. Yes.
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 Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
And Dr. Page?
Yes. Thank you. Under the area of personnel, I'm recommending that the Board of Education approve the retirements and resignations, as listed, leaves of absence, the revised leaves of absence, the approval of contract changes, the approval of transfers and changes in appointments, the motions to rescind the contracts of a few employees, motion to approve appointments of administrators, teachers, long-term substitutes, clerical assistants, lunch aids, custodians, coaches, substitutes, mentors, and the harassment, intimidation, and bullying, anti-bullying specialists, and substitute teachers, as well as extra-period coverage, summer work, and revisions of summer work contracts, and revisions of extended school year, as listed.
All right. I need a motion.
I have a question.
So moved.
So, second. We can move second and go through. If we need to separate anything, we can do that at that time. Is it, we can?
You can't discuss until the motion's on the table, I don't believe.
Right. We can't. All right. Have we, do we have a motion?
We do. You have a motion and a second.
And a second?
You do.
All right. Any discussion?
Now I have a question.
Mrs. Haley?
Sorry. Specifically under B9, the summer work, looking at some of the numbers that we're paying per hour, doesn't match up to what those people are actually making per year. So, I'm curious as to how we come up with those calculations, because I'm looking at the data right in front of me online, specifically in the library media specialist area. We're paying $61.13 an hour for 50 hours' work. My calculations would show that's approximately $130,000 a year. And that person is actually only making $76,000 a year in the district. So, I'm sorry, $78,220. So, I'm just curious where we come up with those calculations.
Based on how many days?
Based on 10 months. Based on 10 months. That's how I was calculating.
Shouldn't it be 185 days?
Mr. Mahmood?
Dr. Schiff, I'm, to be honest, I'm not sure how Mr. Rocco calculated that. I was not a part of that calculation process. So, I'm not sure, Ms. Haley, how that was calculated.
Thank you.
Days minus that, five hours.
Yeah.
Jordan, please.
Okay. I can speak to the ESL Summer Enrichment Program, the secretary that worked. I did speak with the payroll clerk, actually the payroll person, who presented me with the annual and then divided it and did what she had to do to come up. And it is more than 10 months, because they have some days that they work in the summer. And I can also speak to the ESL Summer Enrichment Program, the person who's there, the one, two, three, fourth one down. That was just only 10 hours, because that person worked for the other Summer Enrichment Program, and that came out of that revenue from that. So, that was her, and she, she is a certified school nurse. And I would, and as far as the, one, two, three, fourth one, a third one from the bottom, that was a substitute, actually, because the teacher had to go to court. And so, that's what that was about. And that is her hourly. And then the last person, that's actually a contracted rate that has been in effect. That's, that's within the contract. So, that's not a per hourly, per her pay.
May I make a suggestion for the board? Because I don't wish to guess whether or not that there may have been an error there, that the board approved the 50 hours at the, at the appropriate hourly rate, or what is stipulated within their contract. And then we will go back and do a summary memo to the board stipulating exactly what that hourly rate is, and share with the public if there's any question about it. That way, you can still approve it. You can assure that if there was a calculated error, that, that we will correct it. And we will send you update verifying how that was calculated.
I do have a question about that. I think to spring, would it, would it be normal to assume that to compute the hourly rate, you would simply take their annual rate and come up with an hourly rate, and that's what they would get paid? Or is there something else going on here? I, I don't mean in a nefarious way, but perhaps there's some other reason for this discrepancy.
This was, I'm, I'm not certain, but this was discussed in the Human Resources Committee in terms of the rationale for why we wanted extra hours for the, for the library media specialists, due to the elimination of the media assistants positions. That additional clerical and other type of work, readying the libraries for the beginning of the school year is essential. And the reason that I'm asking the board to move forward with this motion is that we won't have another board meeting and enough time for them to complete the work that is, that's necessary, that they requested, and that administration is recommending for them to open up the libraries appropriately.
If I could just, I mean, I have a computer. I have a calculator. Let's do the math. 79,000 is what? $61 an hour, 185 days, 79,000. So, basically, it's the same.
You in the ballpark?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's in the ballpark.
Yeah. I mean, you, you look down the line, and it doesn't seem to be, you know, had a line with a lot of the other ones. So...
I have no idea what, how we managed to calculate something to decide that we should pay $61.13 an hour and not $61. But, but nevertheless, it's very much in the same ballpark. I don't think that any of these numbers are really out of line.
But I think in terms of clarifying for the board, we'll write out exactly how that was calculated, and in the future, so there is no question about.
Thank you.
Is everybody okay with that? We vote on this hourly rate with the stipulation that it's based on their contract, you know, that it's going to be correct?
Yeah.
All right.
And for clarification, these are not the positions that were eliminated?
I'm sorry?
These were not the library positions that were eliminated recently?
No, no. These are the librarians that will do the setup that the library assistants are no longer there to do. So, there's additional work that needs to be completed in order to set up the libraries for the start of the school year.
And is there, are there other people of similar skill set of the assistants that could do that work? So, are we paying, are we overpaying having a specialist do what an assistant did before?
I don't believe so, although, you know, logically, if I'm saying that this is a substitute for the, for the assistant's position, one could conclude that. And the reason I'm saying no is that there was a discussion among administrators, I was not at that, that particular meeting, about that very issue. So, there was something that the knowledge of the librarian and their understanding of how their libraries operate was essential in making sure. It couldn't just be something that could be assigned to temporarily in order for them to, to get the work done. If that was the case, we wouldn't have been paying a librarian to do something that an assistant should be able to do.
Thank you.
But in a way, we, we are no longer paying those assistants, which is a whole salary, and we're making up for it by paying an hourly rate, but not the whole year's salary. Mrs. Haas?
In relation to my favorite subject of library assistants, today, an instant alert went out to the district in regard to getting volunteers to work in our libraries. Could somebody please explain that, and what procedures are going to be gone through for putting people into the library in a position that employees of the district used to hold?
Again, this was a conversation that came out of that, that same meeting, when it was determined that we needed some additional librarian time in order to, to ready the libraries. Basically, my understanding is that they will follow the same procedure as, as for what, whatever volunteers come into the district for whatever reason. But the idea is to try to get some additional help that would volunteer their time to help check out books, help shelf certain things, and they would be trained by the librarians in order to do that.
Well, I would like to get a report on that very shortly after it commences. I mean, are you going to have all these volunteers fingerprinted?
It will be done by policy. So, whatever the, the policy indicates for, for volunteers, we would do that.
Okay. So, we're going to have volunteers fingerprinted to come into the schools and work in the libraries. And, okay. I, I guess I would like somebody to look at that and how it's going, like within three months, if that's possible.
Absolutely.
Mr. Pulsifer? I can't speak to the high school, but this is not a new program. We have had volunteers working in our libraries in the elementary and Otten Road, and I believe the middle school for many years. This is the first time I've seen anybody try to put a more rigid schedule around it. But we have had volunteers in our libraries for 14 years, 15 years? Yeah, I'm counting back.
Counting.
Yeah, counting back. But that's, so it's not new. I think, yeah, many years. So, I think the formal, building a more formal schedule around it, which is, as I read the instant alert, I think that is new. But the idea that we have volunteers constantly in our libraries is a regular thing we've been doing for quite a while.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, roll call, oh, Mrs. Lay?
Yeah. Since I'm not on the Human Resources Committee, I just need to understand for the anti-bullying specialists, there are, there's one in some of the elementary schools, but not...
Yeah, we, we haven't completed that process. So, before, prior to the next board meeting, we'll have another agenda to complete that. So, there are some schools that aren't listed, but they still will need to have a specialist identified early in the fall.
And, and these specialists have, I'm assuming, some counseling?
They'll receive additional training. I believe that all that are listed on your agenda are guidance counselors.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Now, seeing no further discussion, roll call Mr. Mahmood.
Sure. Mr. Page. Mrs. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Gillett?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Under the area of finance, I'm recommending that the board approve the monthly financial reports, the monthly bills list, line item transfers, and the joint transportation agreements is listed, and the motion to approve requests for local taxes.
I need a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Mr. Kinst?
The, for item C5, the motion to approve request for local taxes, that's based on the filings that were filed that Tuesday, a couple of weeks back?
Okay. Yes. Now, I have a question. What is he talking about?
He's talking about the district had an opportunity, Mr. Page, to do tax relief and to file it with, this is the tax levy that was voted on by the taxpayers, as is, without any adjustments accordingly.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call Mr. Mahmood.
Mrs. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
And Mr. Page?
Yes.
Under the area of administration, I'm recommending that the board approve the following policies for second reading, the duties of the superintendent, school-level planning, employment of substitute teachers, use of electronic communication recording devices, and use of physical restraint. Approve the overnight field trips, as listed. Approve the field trip destination. Approve the professional travel-related expenses. And approve the revised meeting schedule of the Hillsborough Board of Education, D5. And that's all I have.
All right. I need a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Yes. Question.
And discussion.
Sorry. With regards to D3, the motion to approve the following field trip destination, can you please tell me what first food stop is? Because I can't find it anywhere on the Internet.
Sure. I, I actually think it's a convenience, a convenience store. And that is utilat, what happened was our extended school year program, our students in that program often go on these life skills trips. And that one was not approved. So, they didn't go, but we had it approved for, for next time. So...
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That doesn't sound like good news for their business, if you can't find them on the Internet.
I, I do wish to mention that on the list of board meeting dates, we have a board meeting date that conflicts with the New Jersey School Board's workshop. It's October 24th. That's a Monday. I suggest that we not meet that day in order for the board to, to participate in workshop, if they, if they wish. The choices are either the Monday prior to or Halloween.
Oh.
Can we come to costume?
You already do, don't you, Mark? I would suggest the, the choices, the boards. But we may, we may have a quorum problem if we, if we continue to hold the meeting that night.
Can we gain insights on that right now?
I'm sorry?
Do we, can we gain insights of people played, or have people, board members, who's prepared to attend those meetings on the 24th?
I would suggest Halloween. Because of the way the calendar falls, it would still be two weeks before the first November meeting, if we went on Halloween. So, we wouldn't be compressing the October, second October.
You want to hold a board meeting on Halloween?
My kids are 16 and 19. I, I'll be here.
I guess nobody comes to your house to get candy.
My wife lives to give out that candy. Now, I just think, I mean, if we, you know, if we push them one week apart by pushing it back into October, how much are we going to be able to accomplish in, in terms of getting business attended to a week later? I mean, the practical matter is that, you know, a week isn't much time to worry about what's going to be on the next things we need to do. If we push it out a week, it still leaves us two weeks before the meeting that would follow it. So, from a practical perspective, from, in terms of the business we need to get done, I understand it's Halloween, but...
Let's start with the easy question. How many people present are planning on making the originally scheduled date?
For the 24th?
Yeah, I can, I don't go to school board. Are there people going to, who's going to the school board convention?
Oh, I thought you were going to make a meeting.
One, two, three. Okay, never mind. All right. So, we'll move it.
We have no quorum.
Right. All right. So, then, then the next question is a week before or a week after?
Or you can move it to a Tuesday. I mean, for another day of the week.
Yes.
Is it?
Can we just have one meeting that month or no?
No, no. A week later would be Halloween. Can't do that.
How about, how about if we vote on the way it is right now, and then we can revise it?
What?
What's that? How about if we vote on it the way it is now, and then we can revise it for the next meeting?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Is there an, an opposition or a rule that we can't meet on a, well...
We can meet on any day we want to, like a Tuesday, like the next day.
The convention's running till the 26th, though, correct?
24th, 25th, 26th, yeah.
Would, how about November 1st, the Tuesday following Halloween?
So, our, our proposal is to vote and just approve it as... So, our, our proposal is to vote and just approve it as it is and then we, we can revise it. See, we revise it and see what date we can, we can get together. That way, we can do all this offline. Is everybody okay with that? Because I.
Why are we voting to approve something that's already been approved?
No, the dates have been changed based upon, based upon the Change Committee structure.
Oh, I see. Thank you. I got it.
Is everybody good with that?
What?
That we, we throw out some dates for, to, to replace the twenty-fourth and, and figure out when we can get people together?
Sounds good.
Sounds good. On the left, are you good with that? On the right, are you good with that?
I'm good.
Okay. So, we'll vote as is. All right. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Kint?
For the, for the duties of the superintendent of schools, glad to see that the additional items are restored. There are a couple of line items that make reference to statute numbers that I think were meant to be taken out. So, just from a consistency perspective, it makes reference to them at the very, very end. There's a couple that are in here and when you look at what the changes were prior, it looked like that all of them were being taken out. So, I, I think it's just a couple that were missed.
Sure, I can, I can take another look, but nothing is substantive, it's just the citation?
No, not substantive. No, just the citations.
So, the, the board can approve it with the, with the non-substantive changes, that won't they?
All right. Any further comment or question? All right, seeing none, roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Sure. Mrs. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kint?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay? Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Pulserfer?
Yes.
And Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
All righty. Okay, that brings us to old business.
All right. Is there any old business from the public at this time? You can once again have the chance to address the board. All right, seeing none, is there any old business from the board?
This may not be old business, but I, I request that we hold a special meeting on Monday, the twenty-ninth to, to appoint any last-minute appointments to positions that we have still open in the district prior to the beginning of school year. We, we actually had a, this is relatively early in the, in August to have our final meeting before school starts. So, rather than wait a full month that we have another meeting in, in August to take care of that, at seven-thirty on Monday night, the, the twenty-ninth. Question? We can also continue to hold conversations and to make, have the board consider some of the positions that we discussed tonight as well.
Yes, so, in, in talking with Dr. Schiff about this, I, I like the idea of when we have two meetings a month, that if we have something we want to chew on and discuss and, and something, you know, big like we did tonight, that we get one meeting to do that and don't have to vote on it that night, that we get some time in between. Now, on the other hand, this is the busy time of the year for the front office in terms of getting ready for school and that if they're going to put positions in and, and get things ready, they would like to have a, a meeting on the twenty-ninth so that we can get things finalized before the start of school. So, are we looking for a straw poll?
Either way, just give me direction and we'll, we'll post the position and we'll post the, the meeting.
I can make the twenty-ninth. Got Tom?
I have to check my work schedule.
We got one to check. The twenty-ninth is good?
Happy to be here.
No, I'll be in France.
La di da. All right, so, we have one checked, one missing.
I can let you know tomorrow.
Okay. We'll, we'll try to have that.
Okay. And we'll reach out to Greg and to, to Ian also?
Yes. All right. So, that concludes old, Mr. Kint?
There's some old business that we have responsibilities as a board, self-evaluation, goal-setting. There's also contractual performance goals for Dr. Schiff that we need to have for this year. So, I don't know if that should be addressed through which appropriate committee or as a board as a whole.
I can make a suggestion that we set it up through Human Relation, Human Resources Committee and have them recommend to the full board and that we can discuss depending upon the, you know, the nature of it, whether we need an executive or whether we can do it out in public, we can do it that way. And we could wrap it up in, in September. It also gives, one of the things, it's a real frustration of mine and, and I know Lisa feels the same way, we will not receive our state assessment results until August twenty, twenty-third, which makes planning for the next year very difficult. So, it's, once we get that information, then we can begin our student achievement goal-setting. That's a very important part of, of moving forward. And the administrative team are currently developing their goals. They're due on, on September one. So, we'll, we'll have all of that together and then I can provide the committee with some draft goals and the full board can then contemplate them.
And the board goals, is that what you're talking about? The self-assessment is done usually next spring sometime.
Yeah, we never, I don't think we ever did it for this calendar year. We filled out the forms, but I don't think we've come together as a board to review them. And then, the district goals is for the, for the district.
Right.
Everything should cascade from that.
Can we send that to the Human Resources as well?
Sure, why not?
Okay.
We'll take it all on.
All right. Mrs. Haas?
Actually, actually, there are two different things. There's the board self-evaluation, which usually takes place along with the superintendent evaluation right before the election, the annual election reorganization. It's supposed to be done before the new board takes over. But, what we should have at this time of the year are our goals and objectives for this year. So, is there any status or progress on that?
That's, that's what I asked Chris. I, we just had that conversation, that the spring is a self-evaluation and that we should be doing board goals and objectives. So, I sent it over to Human Resources to start looking at.
Right, but who's doing the strategic planning piece?
The last direction that, that I, that I received from the board was to do this crosswalk of, of the Building on Excellence Report with the existing strategic plan. And that's what I anticipate will be the genesis of the goals moving forward and that's what I was anticipating sharing with, with the Human Resources Committee in mid, in mid-September. Now, I'm kind of hesitating on it because we just spent three days talking about PLCs, SMART goal development, common assessment, and, you know, it's making me think a little differently as well about my personal goals as well as the district goals moving forward.